You are watching Access La Porte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the June 17th meeting for the Trail Creek Town Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
If I can have everyone stand and join me in saying the pledge to open our meeting. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation under indivisible liberty and justice for all. Welcome everyone to our June meeting. Before we start the meeting, I do have one amendment to the agenda, if I may. If we can have a motion to add the letter from Tim Warner, the city engineer for Michigan City to new business.
I move. I'll second.
Thank you, Warren and Pete, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So we'll add the letter of inquiry from the engineer's office in Michigan City. Does anyone else have any other amendments or additions to the agenda? Hearing none, we'll move on to our regular order. Has everyone had a chance to peruse the minutes to review them and see if they had any changes? Corrections?
Thirty-two is spelled wrong.
Okay.
T H R I should be I R. It's the only thing I see.
Any other changes or corrections? Hearing none, can we have a motion to approve the minutes from May of twenty, uh, May 20th, 2025?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And then we'll move on to the fund report. And Crystal, as always, I'm going to ask you if there are any surprises that I need to look for or any new changes?
No, everything's about the same.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the council? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the fund report?
Make a motion to approve the fund report?
In a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Moving on, we'll look at the cash, well, the bank reconciliation. And if you would take a look there, this will match actually all of the checks in the accounts payable as well as match our balance there as well, right?
Yes.
There it is.
Yep.
Yep. As always, Crystal, thank you for that. And that's really just for your information, that doesn't need to have approval. Just for the record. Moving on to the accounts payable or the payment of the bill. Any comments or questions from the council? Can I have a motion to approve payment of the bills? And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Fantastic. We will move on. Any correspondence this month?
Uh, no.
Then we'll move on. Do we have anything for MS four this month? If you can approach the microphone, make sure you turn it on and we'll give you the floor.
I'll do a MS four presentation under new business, if that's what you prefer. Oh, oh, you want me to do that now? Okay. Well, I had notes, but I'll, I'll remember them. Okay. First of all, MS four wise, we submitted the annual report to IDAM.
Can I have you introduce yourself to the council first?
Yeah, my apologies. Um, so the required annual report was submitted to IDAM. One of the components that we have to report on in the annual report is some actions that the town has taken for public outreach. Um, so that's again, part of the reason I'm here to do a kind of an overview for the residents on stormwater. Um, another, which I'll do in just a moment, but um, we are interested in um, some upcoming town events this year. I think Jenny had emailed me that there was something in September. Um, I'd spoken to someone else in um, town hall that mentioned, I think a fall festival that's happening in the town in November. October, okay. Um, so I'll want to coordinate as the time gets closer, but we did order a kind of a simple banner um, with the town's name on it that says something that I, it's been a while since I've looked at the graphic, but something that says like only rain down the drain, or like I said, something to that effect, um, with some literature. So maybe a table could be set up at town events that anyone could, you know, wander over and kind of find out about stormwater. So um, that's part of the public outreach and I can again, uh, come to a meeting like this or any other town meetings and put on a little bit more of a presentation. I wasn't quite sure how the audio visual would work. So maybe in the future I'll have like a video. Um, I have identified a couple of short videos. Um, you know, under two and a half minutes that maybe could be put on either the town website, or if you have any social media, those links could be put on. So um, I didn't know if that was Laura, if you were the person who would be taking care of that. So or so does the social, okay. Well, just maybe if it's not tonight, I'll get your contact information and I'll get those, I'll get those videos to you. Um, okay, okay, great. Um, so now, so I'll jump ahead with my, you know, MS four presentation. Typically in a municipality, um, stormwater, uh, the MS four portion, the stormwater covers a lot of different aspects. It's going to be everything from, you know, a new commercial site. I'm sure you've, you're all familiar with going through, going by a commercial site and seeing the silt fence and other items that they put up. Those are requirements that are part of stormwater control. And when you have a new project in the town, and it sounds like, you know, Woodruff is working on um, a project, you know, when that happens, they have to get uh, approval of their stormwater controls. But aside from new construction, there's other items like things that the residents can do to help with stormwater. And some of those examples are, you know, basic things like picking up after your pet because if that waste stays on the ground, then once it rains, you know, all that bacteria, it gets flushed into our stormwater system, which then goes into the water bodies. The same thing with over fertilizing your yards or, and I'm no expert on it, so I may be saying the wrong thing. I live near a water body and I've, I've heard it talked about, there's a certain um, component that you want to keep low on, it might be nitrogen. So my apologies if I don't quite know that, but just making sure that you're aware of your um, fertilizer, because again, some nutrients, when they get into the water bodies, they can call out, cause algae growth, um, which then um, you know, disrupts the, disrupts the ecosystem of that water body. Um, there's other items that residents can do, like don't put grass clippings uh, so that they can be washed into storm drains. The same thing with leaves. I know the town seems pretty good about leaf pickup, leaf and brush, but again, these are items that the residents could do. Obviously, no, and the only thing that should be going down a storm drain is rainwater. So um, is this probably doesn't happen here, but any home mechanics that want to flush their, their fluids down the drain. I mean, I know that seems obvious, but this is part of the education, that just making people aware of how to keep your stormwater clean, because it does go into our water bodies. So
I have to ask, just in the interest of time, um, do you have information with you that you could leave here for us tonight?
You know, I can drop that off probably tomorrow because they're in my office. We did make up some um, some uh, handouts that we could leave like at town hall when people come in, they can take them.
Because I think that would be ideal, and then maybe sharing the videos like you'd suggested on our, our social media page and then on our website. And then depending on the interests that we have and even possibly even doing it otherwise from, from our, our residents here, maybe having you come back for a different event.
Oh, sure.
Um, because this really isn't the proper place to do a whole stormwater presentation. And so I don't want to, you know, I don't want to cut you off, but I also about going, um, rather than, you know, have you, I'd rather have you do it in appropriate setting. So if we, would that be okay if we scheduled a different time for you and a specific time slot for that? Because that would be fantastic.
Sure. What type of, and what type of event like do you have usually?
So other than these meetings, we would have to call a special meeting or, or open it up as an open house for MS four, if you will.
Yeah.
Um, and we could absolutely do that. And then again, you know, having you out at the, the five K event in September, I know you and I had talked about that. And then having you maybe at the, at the fall festival, those are perfect opportunities because we get a lot of traffic at both of those. Um, and so those would be really, you know, amazing places to do some outreach.
Yeah, no, that, that's great, because again, I, I would hope as public officials that this is never know how many people are either watching your meetings or in the audience. And that was kind of the
Right.
But yeah, I like your open houses.
Okay. Fantastic.
That's all I had, unless you had any other questions?
Please.
Check box.
Absolutely required.
But again, any, any other ideas, you know, obviously send them our way. I like the, uh, those two like fall events sound, sound great as well.
Wonderful.
All right, that's all I had.
Thank you. We'll get you scheduled for the other meeting as well.
Thank you. Now, if there's anything else, I mean, I don't have to stay for the entire meeting. Or unless you want me to stay, I'm, I'm fine with that.
I personally think the brochures, if you ladies would hand them out when they get a lot of traffic. Whether they want it or not.
Oh, yeah, for, for sure. Yeah, I can bring those back in tomorrow.
That would be wonderful. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Thank you.
And thank you to, to you and to Global for all the hard work you've done with MS four. I know that's not a small task. Right. Yeah. Having a map is, is very helpful of that. So thank you. Moving on to our engineer or attorney, rather, I'm going to skip you and go right to
Only one thing that Laura's also educated herself on as well as uh, the clerk's office doesn't have enough on their plate, the uh, this past legislative session, they've passed more requirements. Presumably it's a transparency and making sure people know who's serving the community, but you'll see new agenda items going forward uh, with noting the, who the decision makers are for whatever that is. So it could be park board, it could be town council, BZA. So listing the members, uh, where they're at in their term, and if they're appointed, um, the appointing body for them. So that's a new requirement that starts July 1st, there was, yeah, so everybody is um, luckily you don't have as many, but yeah, some with complex rules and many boards and committees that won't be fun for those that are preparing, but still a lot of work nonetheless. So if you see that change, it's really the only major one that affects you.
Okay, thank you. Anything on Harding Street or no?
No. Got my last correspondence with that, so we can address that if you'd like, but I'll, I'll resend it to everybody so you can review that and give me direction.
Thank you. Engineer. Hello, how are you? It's time for our engineer.
Good to see everyone. Uh, I should probably start by introducing myself. I'm Ryan Loughlin with Hazen Associates. Um, as you know, Ken Kraus from our office has recently retired after working 50 years at Hazen Associates. Um, so he stuck around just enough time to get that in there, but um, so he's not, he won't be representing Haz anymore. I will probably be here most of the time, although Sam Oze, who's another engineer at our office may attend from time to time as well. Um, so that's me. Uh, we do have a couple of things to address tonight. One of which is the 2025 dash one CCMG street improvement project. That's an upcoming project that's going to do a mill and pave operation on Johnson Road, several other streets, a little bit of drainage work on the south side of Wellness and paving out here in front of town hall and some striping work there. We received two bids for that project on June 12th. Reeve Riley was the um, low bidder at nine hundred and twenty-three thousand, twenty-eight dollars and eighty-seven cents. This project is being funded by the N dot CCMG, that's the community crossings, community crossing mass matching grant. So as part of that, we need to submit some documentation to end up by the 28th in order to make sure that funding goes through. So to stay ahead of that deadline, we're hoping that we get the uh, award approval tonight for the contract. And then get some, some of the documents that we need to submit to end up signed, uh, so that we can get those sent to end up tomorrow. So we've already sent the council, our recommendation of award to Reeve Riley. We've reviewed their documentation. They've sent us their performance and payment bonds, their liability insurance certificate and so forth. We reviewed all that stuff. So they're all in order and we're recommending that the board approve award of the contract to Reeve Riley.
Okay. Anything further or where does that cover all of it for you?
I think that's, that's it for that project. As I mentioned, there's a few documents I need your signature on, uh, and hopefully we can get that before so we can send it out tomorrow. But other than that, that's, that's it. And then, um, just a an update on some of the other things that we've worked on here. Um, specifically park planning for Congdon and Nelson Parks regarding ADA planning and kind of just overarching improvement planning. And we've coordinated with Katrina and um, and other members of the council extensively and worked out kind of a plan. And I know that there isn't, I, I don't think the council is going to move forward necessarily with some of the, with our proposal that we submitted um, before the last meeting, but yes, that remains to be seen. Anyway, that's some good long-term planning there, and I think lays the groundwork for, you know, some important work that can be done and needs to be done for grants and other opportunities for the parks. Um, and then we've had up, I think we've got four driveway permits active right now that are maybe almost five potentially, but um, one of them was just completed on Firefly Drive, I think it is. Four three five Firefly Drive. Um, so that one looks good. I'm not that familiar with the 140 Harding. I don't know if that's what you guys were speaking about before, but there's a driveway.
Different address.
Okay, okay. Um, but there, I think that was one of the other ones. And there's a couple of other ones that are kind of in the mix right now and we're processing that. Um, there are some, I will say that there are some kind of interesting quirks to the, the town's minimum standards that kind of make them somewhat unclear. And I think we should address those, not here, but I would follow up with some recommendations and how we could make that a little clearer for everybody involved.
Okay.
Like from, from us, from our review standpoint, the council to make sure, you know, that process does what you intend for it to do. And then just for applicants so that they can like more clearly understand what's expected of them. So I think that's about it. We also had an inquiry about the Family Express development potentially, um, over there on 20. And um, our understanding is that that would be, it's not in the town's purview essentially, because it's outside of the town limit, then it doesn't involve town infrastructure. So
Correct.
Nothing to be done about that, but that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you so much. Nice to meet you tonight.
Yeah, likewise.
Anyone have any questions? Thank you. Give us more. Does anyone have any other questions for Ryan before we move on?
Just what you commented on, are you going to make a list of what we need to review?
Yes, absolutely. I'll take a closer look at that and put some uh, specific recommendations in an email and send that out. So you guys can look at it and understand what's kind of a miss and what we can do.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Moving on to our park department. We have his under new business, so do that there. Not yet. We'll move on to our park department because we're still in report.
Oh, yeah, turn it on.
You have to click the button from there.
No, and there you go.
There you go.
Okay. Um, anyways, I'm Katrina Vito, the park board president. Um, I want to start by thanking Laura for organizing our first park program. Um, we, it was yoga in the park and seven people attended. Um, and they indicated they would like to come back. So that's um, all great feedback. I don't know. Do you have anything to add to that or?
No, just um, Chris sent me some forms that I need to, that I sent to Teresa. I haven't heard back from her. She needs to sign them.
Oh, okay. All right. That's all. I hope that actually becomes like a regular thing that we would do or more programs like that, you know? Um, so then I'm going to rearrange how I was going about this, but um, so I want to touch base on the ADA compliance. So that might have to be postponed till next year, um, because of the issues going on at the playground at Nelson Park. Um, it's more of a safety issue now, so um, that kind of needs to be addressed first. Right now, um, we're, so our focus this year will, will be on the playground at Nelson Park and um, also raising money for the fall festival. Um, we have applied for a $20,000 grant from the Health Foundation of La Porte. Initially, I was trying to apply for um, two grants, like two separate grants, um, one for the ADA compliance and then another one for the playground, but um, my time is limited. So I wasn't able to get both of those in, but the one for the playground is. Um, and we should be hearing back in July about that. Um, so I'm, I'm hoping that that pulls through and um, yeah, and then um, I'm also applying for a $5,000 grant from the Unity Foundation. And um, that's the last grant I know of. We are actually having problems finding grants that um, do not have a nonprofit requirement. Um, because we're in a municipality, we're not a nonprofit. Most grants are for nonprofits. So if anyone has any leads on grants that are not for nonprofits, that would be um, really helpful if anyone could forward them our way. Um, and let's see, oh, uh, the Hacienda Give Back Night is scheduled for um, Tuesday, July 8th, that, that again is um, a fundraiser for the park playground. Um, I also want to mention our um, our fundraising goal is between forty and fifty thousand dollars for that uh, park playground. I um, actually have some what do you call it? Um, quotes here from the uh, I have three different quotes from three different playground vendors. I don't know if you guys want to like um, that'll just kind of give you an idea of the different expenses that um, will happen, I guess you could say, um, when we, when we have to go through that purchase. Um, and again, we need room for anything else that might happen. Um, so it, I mean, it's definitely going to be above, I could see it going above $50,000. So it's just an FYI. It's going to take a while to raise this money. Um, so I don't know when the ADA compliance will be addressed. I'd also like to ask, um, if the town council could help us um, with funding in any way, we would really appreciate it, especially since right now the playground is a safety issue. Um, if there's any room in your budget that you could contribute towards the playground, um, we, I mean, I would like to talk about that. So um, just putting that out there.
So these are three different bids that you're looking at, correct?
Yeah, yeah. Um, I mean, they're all just kind of um, rough quotes. So it's nothing in, you know, that we actually want, we can always adjust it or modify it, especially with the um, engineered wood fiber um, safety surface. We already have some down, so that might, because we already have some down, that might change the cost because we might not need as much. Um, if we don't need the fabric, if we don't need to replace all the fabric and um, things like that, then that could also change the cost, but we'll address that in the future. Um, oh, yeah. Anyways, back to the Hacienda Give Back Night. Um, I uh, there's a post on Facebook up for the tokens you can print on there. Or um, you can get them at town hall. Um, there will be some tokens available at town hall, the moose um, and various other business locations and any of the park board members. Um, and then let's see. Um, so I, I want to uh, bring up the um, topic of amending the park board ordinance for the fifth uh, park board member, like adding the fifth park board member. Is there any updates on that or?
I'm prepared to answer that if you'd like to
Please.
do that now. You, you are restricted uh, to add the fifth member and the fifth member has to be a member of either the school board corporation or its designate or the library district. So that fifth member is restricted as to who that can be.
So you're saying it has to, it has to either be someone from the park, from the library or a teacher?
Well, I'm not saying who it has to be designated, but I'll send you that and likely that would be one of you know, if the school board were to
If it's someone that volunteers at a school.
I, it'd have to be designated by the school board or a member of the school board, or it has to be designated by the library district board.
We'll talk more about that.
I'll send you the code section. So that, and they acquired a little bit more before, so.
Okay. Sounds good. Um, but not least, um, so our, our next meeting isn't scheduled until August and with everything going on, we really need to get together before that. But with everybody's schedules, it's hard to get together. Um, so I wanted to know if it's possible to, like, if I come here, we have a meeting, I bring my laptop and the members that can't make it participate uh, via Zoom. I don't know if that's um, if that's allowable, because I mean, the public would be able to come.
Having, you have to adopt a resolution to be able to have meetings via Zoom, and I can send you those requirements as well. To be able to have Zoom meetings, electronic, and then there are certain requirements. So I will send you follow up to do that.
So do
And then you need to make sure you post and publish notice for each of those meetings at least 48 hours in advance, not including weekends or holidays. So you can't just have
Does the park board have to create an ordinance or do we?
Ordinance, it's a resolution. Ordinance, it's a resolution. Every board who wants to have participate in electronic meetings has to adopt the resolution.
Would that have to be passed, you guys?
Every board who wants to do that has to adopt a resolution. Yeah, whoever, board, committee, whatever, individually, because just because, for instance, if the town council wanted to, they could, or they could adopt a blanket, but the Park Board would have to do, same with BZA, same with Plan Committee.
Alright.
So I'll send you.
Does anyone have questions for me? Nope, okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. And Katrina, before you leave, thank you for all your hard work on the grants. I know it's not a simple task. So thank you for everything you're doing. All right, I don't see our building inspector this evening. Anything for planning and zoning?
I just have a question. For Crystal. Um, were there any or how many responses did we?
Not one.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Mm hmm.
Yeah. How many spots do we have open for those four?
All of them.
Oh, yeah. And we sent uh to everybody that was on the board before.
And no response from anyone.
We had one response that said probably not.
Okay. So we'll be looking for new members for the planning board and the zoning board. We'll have to advertise those appropriately. And if anyone watching has any interest in those, please get in touch with our town clerk at her office. Phone number's two one nine eight seven two two four two two. All right. Moving on to our police department then. Good evening.
Uh, not this past weekend, weekend before last, the uh St. Stan's had their five K race and that went quite well, smooth, no issues. Uh, at least none that were brought to me, so I just want to throw that out there. Did a great job. Uh, also, uh fireworks, been a lot of fireworks lately and the state has a law that is pretty specific about fireworks and the town has adopted that law as our ordinance. It's pinned to our Facebook page and is always there to show when those days are. Uh, there's been a lot of fireworks lately and uh please spread the word that one, do not set them off. Two, if you happen to see somebody setting, setting them off, it's important to get the address and at least the person that may be doing it because we can't address it with a neighborhood. We have to go to the individual that's doing it. Uh, we most certainly want to address it, so please help us, help you by uh nailing down a little bit more information and not just calling in and say the three hundred block of the street, there's fireworks going off. We get there and we find them, that's great, but if we get there and they went in for the night, we will not find them, so. Uh, and lastly, as I passed out a memo and I, I hope you all read that, it is a personnel matter, but please take the time to read that and um come up with some ideas about what can be done. That's all I have.
That will have to be a special.
Right, and that's why I said, I think I even put it in there that it's, it is a personnel matter and needs to be addressed uh uh in a separate setting, so.
Okay. In the meantime, know that uh Mr. Speakman is in our prayers.
Appreciate that. Did speak with him today. I did say speak. Um, a little difficult to understand, but uh nonetheless, I could understand him with a little help, so. Says he's getting the use of his right side, so. Jason Strong.
Good.
Yeah, he is.
Please, if you have any questions, I have his address. If anyone's, that he wants to send him a card, that'd be awesome. He'd appreciate that.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Guys, thanks for your support. As always, we appreciate it.
As always. I do have one question. Did you, did you hear anything? Was there any trouble with the garage sales with having sixty three of them in town?
Not a one. I worked, I worked that day and and nothing.
That's good.
So, which makes me good because my biggest thing is the traffic and people just, you know, they'll just drive down the road and stop right in the middle of the driving lane and get, I I didn't experience any of that, so. So it was great. Thank you for asking.
It was surprised how many people signed up.
I was surprised Friday how many were out there because they were asking about Friday. Julie sent me a text about Friday and I said, there's, every street has at least one or two, every street, so that was good to see. Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on um this, to the street department, I know that Mr. Baker's not here this evening with us. However, we do have a, an ordinance about these sticks, limbs and branches and special service fees that we'll address for him this evening. That along with the repairs at Nelson Park rather, there are some issues with that that we're, we're taking care of. He's got fencing um quotes to get that all repaired and get things back into place as quickly as possible. So hopefully that'll be repaired relatively soon. Uh, moving on to NERPC, any report?
No.
Question on the um Nelson Park. Does anybody know what's happening or what happened to the tube slide or what's the process of what's going on with that?
Laura, do you want to answer that or?
The what?
The tube slide that was removed. What's going on or is it getting, yeah?
We did have to remove it because people kept taking the tape off of it.
Sure.
There.
It's not going to be repaired, that Dave put some plywood over it.
Yeah.
And that's what the fundraiser is for. They're going to replace the whole thing because the estimate to replace it was thirty six hundred dollars and the person that we talked to said that it's at the end of the lifespan anyway, and he would not recommend replacing it. So that's why they're in a uh fundraiser to get a new set, okay?
Mm hmm. Okay. And with that, we'll move on to new business. Uh, we have the CCMG contract bid up first. And everyone should have that in their packet. Should be on our town letterhead. Okay, so created June eighteenth of twenty twenty five. Um, this letter serves as notification that we've secured and awarded the CCMG crossings grant project listed below to our contractor. Um, the bids are attached, so I think we need to approve the bid first before we sign the letter on the front. We did receive two bids. The first one was from Milestone Contractors for a total of nine hundred twenty nine thousand, six hundred seventeen dollars and ninety one cents. And the second was from Reeve Riley Construction at nine hundred twenty three thousand, twenty eight dollars and eighty seven cents. Um, so Reeve Riley did submit the lowest bid. I know that we've had the um packets that were submitted reviewed both by our engineering company and by Mr. Willoughby. They were all in compliance. Um, and with that, unless anyone has any questions, I would entertain a motion to award Reeve Riley with the CCMG um project bids, they were the lowest bidder. I'm asking for a motion. Thank you. So Warren's got the motion. We have a second.
A second.
Any further discussion or questions? Nope, hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and so with that, then Reeve Riley will be awarded the bid with nine hundred twenty three thousand, twenty eight dollars and eighty seven cents. And we've got the letter on the front. That you need me to sign, wonderful. That's okay. I don't think we need a motion to sign the letter, do we? We never have before, so um moving on from that, we do have ordinance number four dash twenty twenty five. Um, where we will be appropriating some money for the CCMG project, so we'll be moving um the aforementioned funds below that you have listed in front of you. If you would read through those, council. Anyone have any questions or comments from that? Hearing none, can we have a motion to approve ordinance four dash twenty twenty five? In a second?
A second.
Thank you. Any further discussions? Hearing none, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Carries. And then ordinance number five dash twenty twenty five, which is an ordinance amending chapter thirty eight, article two, division two, rates and charges, section thirty five, uh sorry, thirty eight through fifty eight A, charge for garbage, refuse and leaf removal, special service fees. And this one is an ordinance to um implement fees for additional yard debris pickup, specifically stems, limbs and branches. Um, this would not include things that were um grass clippings, vines, root balls, stumps, rocks, bricks, concrete or other construction debris, including but not limited to lumber and shingles, metal, tires, household waste and or related materials. So really, this is just for sticks, limbs and branches.
May I add to that?
Yes, you may.
The, the purpose behind this, along with the resolution, is to more formally memorialize the policy that you approved for the street department last month. Uh, making sure that we have a codified section for those fees, which will ultimately someday in the future when State Board of Accounts comes to visit your clerk treasurer to make sure that we have an ordinance that she can rely on for collection of those fees. And then the resolution that follows that ordinance is just intended to adopt formally that policy. If you were inclined uh to not only consider on first reading, but to pass this ordinance this evening, it would take a unanimous vote to suspend the rules and consider it both readings this evening or passage in the same night that it is introduced.
Okay. So would you like us to vote to suspend the rules first? Okay, so if we could have a motion to suspend the rules, so that we might vote on the ordinance five dash twenty twenty five as well as resolution three dash twenty twenty five on first reading.
Make that motion.
Thank you. In a second. Thank you. Any questions or discussion?
I do have a question. This Trail Creek Street Department policy, where does this belong?
It goes on the resolution. It's referenced as an exhibit in the resolution.
Is, is, um, so it goes with three dash twenty twenty five.
Okay, okay, okay.
Okay, so this is the policy we spoke about last month.
Okay.
That we approved for, for Dr. Baker.
And so, and and just as a point of clarification to the, the resolution doesn't require any of the special rules. So if you want to consider them, same time you can.
We'll consider them at the same time, though. So the motion on the floor is to suspend the rules that we might vote on and pass ordinance number five dash twenty five, twenty twenty five, and consider them for three dash twenty twenty five. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. And we'll move forward with passing ordinance number five dash twenty twenty five then, um so that we can put these special fees in place for picking up uh um SLBs or sticks, limbs and branches as well as other yard debris that they.
Make that motion.
Appropriate. Thank you. We have a motion from Pete. Do we have a second? Warren? Any further discussion or questions?
I do have a question. I was approached by a constituent down on Black Oak Drive.
Mm hmm.
That he's a snowbird and the two week pickup, he was not even in the house. He came home almost one month after the storm to a broken window and the trees. Would, with something like that, would you make an exception? He was not in residence at the house. You know, I, and I didn't have an answer. I don't know.
I don't know that I have an answer for that this evening either, um although I would hope that if he's not in the house, he's got someone watching the house while he's gone.
He does, but he didn't notice that the window was broke from the tree. He just assumed that the tree coming down would be addressed whenever, you know? And it was one month. It was.
And I think we would have to find a way to prove that he was not here.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah. But we could take that on a, we could take that into consideration.
That's what I thought.
But I think that would be a different situation.
Okay, okay.
And I think overall this sets what your street department superintendent has been asking for at least in excess of a year. It gives the base rule, which doesn't mean there can't be exceptions, but not writing those exceptions in so they don't become the rule.
I'm in sense of exceptions.
So I don't, I don't want to give you a yes or no firmly on that right now, but we could look at that if it ever, if the issue arose again. Um, so the motion on the table is to pass ordinance number five dash twenty twenty five, and as a reminder, we would need to put or pass that at a hundred percent. Um, so we would all need to be in agreement on that. Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hearing none opposed, motion carries. And then moving on to resolution three dash twenty twenty five, twenty five for the SLB yard debris policy. And again, the policy that's there is, there is an attachment worth an example, um so that you have the policy on file as exhibit A. Do we have a motion to pass resolution three dash twenty twenty five? Thank you, Warren, and a second?
A second.
Thank you, Pete. Any further discussion or questions?
I do. Um, so that, the copy that's uh connected to it, we made the uh adj- adjustments, how we wanted the wording to say. So this is a final copy of what will be posted on Facebook and also, um, and we're going to put a ad in the newspaper as well. And then uh Laura will put it on the website.
Thank you. And so uh the pickup guidelines are requesting service. You would have a fifty dollar service fee that would be paid in advance at Town Hall before the pickup could occur. If the debris is determined to be excessive, filling an entire dump truck or dump trailer, an increased fee of another one hundred and fifty dollars would apply, totaling at two hundred dollars paid in advance at the Town Hall uh before the pickup can occur. Uh, the street department commissioner or representative thereof would make the determination and notify the resident and the Town Hall prior to pickup. The placement instructions are to place all sticks, limbs and branches and yard to be, yard debris in the easement area directly in front of your residence, just off the edge of the road. Please make sure not to put it in the road. Um, keep the debris free from obstructions such as vehicles, mailboxes, utility poles or signs. Ensure that the branches are no longer than eight feet to fit safely into the equipment. Uh, what will be picked up would be only debris from trimming done by the resident or homeowner, not by a contractor or someone that they've hired. The street department will not collect debris collected from contracted or paid services. Contractors and residents must handle that removal independently. We do not remove and cannot remove whole trees. That would be the homeowner's responsibility. Uh, with a storm, after a severe storm, sticks, limbs and branches may be placed um out near the street for a no cost pickup for up to two weeks following that event with no call necessary because the street department will assess and collect storm related debris during this time. Any unacceptable items would be grass clippings, vines, root balls, stumps, rocks, bricks or concrete, construction debris being lumber or shingles or similar items, metal, tires or other household waste. Uh, leaf and debris collection seasonal on and ongoing um occurs during the designated fall and spring cleanup periods for a leaf machine. At other times, you can use paper bags for leaves or yard waste, placing those in your yard waste or garbage toter with no bag needed. Uh, for bag pickup by the street department, a request and fee similar to the sticks, limbs and branches pickup must be arranged through the Town Hall. Otherwise, we do all have yard toters. If we, if anyone doesn't have a second toter, they can contact board and refuse um either at the number on the side of their can or at five seven four two nine three five zero zero one. And pickup for those yard toters does occur every Friday alongside garbage collection. Okay. All of that's a mouthful. We have a, a motion a second on the table. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and resolution?
I do have a question now, following that. It's not, I didn't want to do it to tie up that.
Thank you.
Um, and this might be a totally different direction here, but what happens if a tree that's on our ease, the town's easement falls? Then what happens? And say, alright, falls on. Alright, falls on the street, okay, fine. Falls on someone's house. I'm just throwing this out. What happens? What if? Where do you go on that one?
If it falls into the house. They'll cover that.
Not fine, just asking, cause I, there's a lot of those trees that are a lot on easements.
Fallen in the street.
Okay, so the any tree that hits a house, then. The homeowner would clean it up. That it's on easement.
If these policies change and again, just establishing the general rule and. Some of those things, I guess, on case by case basis that allow exception, but. I think that those responses are likely what the responses would be.
Okay. I've been asked. I just make sure it's clear.
Thank you. We appreciate the clarity. Uh, moving on, we'll we'll move past the MS four presentation because Jeanette was kind enough to do a a bit of that during her report. Uh, moving on to the letter of inquiry from the city of Michigan City Engineer's Office, Tim Warner. Um. They will be soon doing some work on the east side of Menke Road. Um. With a water main extension within the city of Michigan City on the side of Menke Road right of way. This work will continue with uh the water main under the south, I'm sorry, south under the north bound or east lane of what would be the Cool Spring Avenue extended east from Johnson Road. Across Trail Creek where Menke Road um turns east and becomes a county maintained aggregate surface road. What they'd like to do is take over the the section of roadway that they're gonna be working on. Um, because there's not been really any maintenance performed since the late seventies. Um, Menke Road serves fiber bond and is a busy um. A busy road with their manufacturing. And so uh with the eight residential homes that are on the west side of Trail Creek on Cool Spring, the city of Michigan City would like to take care of those roadways. And if you look, there are attachments that show the map of what they're proposing they take care of, which really just um. Constitute Menke Road going from Michigan Boulevard all the way down to where it turns and goes into a gravel road. So if you look at the attachment there, you can see that um. That as well. Does anyone have any questions or comments about that or? Thoughts that you'd like to share?
What's that?
Which part? They would actually be maintaining that entire roadway.
Yeah, that's on private property.
Side street in there is a private, is private property. That's not ours to maintain.
Okay. Yeah, could we had a couple complaints about. Us not maintaining that road, so, okay.
Driveway that services those houses.
Okay, perfect.
I personally feel like this might be a good thing for Trail Creek.
Yes.
That that Michigan City is then maintaining that and they would be um responsible since they received the tax revenue from fiber bond. Um.
And I'm ninety nine point nine percent sure where Menke turns and goes uh east.
That belongs to the county.
Belongs to the county.
Mm hmm.
Yeah.
But going down to the gravel road down there.
Where it turns.
Yeah, that gravel.
Heading south, trying to take that left turn to go east. The city annexed that also. Okay.
This would not affect any property within the town of Trail Creek.
No.
We're clear on that. It only affects that roadway.
Yep.
And if. We can have a motion then to approve uh Mr. Warner's request.
I'll second.
Yes, we've got a motion and a second. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all of, all in favor?
Aye.
Hey, motion carries. So Mr. Willoughby, would you want to let Mr. Warner know about that? If you. Thank you. It is, it is through global.
Mm hmm.
Okay, moving on, do we, we don't seem to have any public comment this evening. Do we have any comments from the clerk's office? Any council comments this evening? We are at lunch. Had to check twice. Oh, we will go back to the clerk's office.
Okay, I forgot um. Trash is run on regular schedule today or this week, even though um.
The Juneteenth.
Yes, yes, so.
Thank you for that. I will make one comment that uh thank you, Crystal, to you and Julie for running a great townwide garage sale event. Um, seems like we had more houses signed up this year and it did seem to go quite smoothly. I know that Steve mentioned it in his report, but I just wanted to mention it again from. From the council standpoint, having driven around, driven through it on my way to and from work. Um. And then getting out of town with it on Saturday. Great response.
Sixty five residents participated.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Fantastic. And so we'll look forward to doing that again next year, and I I would imagine it'll be on that second Saturday in June again. Is that the annual planned date?
We have um some residents that uh were complained about it being on Father's Day weekend.
Mm hmm.
Um, but they just had theirs from Thursday to Saturday and and we just accommodated that for them.
Yeah. We didn't have one Sunday either.
Yeah, I think that's a fair accommodation.
Yes, yeah.
And even though we did do the townwide one, people can still do them throughout the rest of the year as long as they come in and pay the permit fee. So.
Yep.
We'll make that comment as well. Um. And with that, if no one has anything further, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. We'll see you in July.
Okay.